Lisa, what are you doing tonight?
I'm gonna be sitting back there.
I'll call our order, call to order our special call meeting this evening. We don't have a quorum, but I don't think it's that important.
Yeah, I still need to call the roll.
Okay, go right ahead.
Okay, Stevens, AG, Harrod, Maynard, Paul, Winteringer, Smith.
Lisa, does this mean we get paid and the rest of them not for tonight?
Yeah, that's it. We don't have a quorum.
Regular salary.
Yeah, time and a half.
I do think we need to go on with it because it's kind of typical sometimes that we three seem to be the ones that are here the most. So our work session is to discuss the master plan wastewater treatment, CIP, and wastewater collections. And it's, the floor is yours, gentlemen, whoever's in charge. Whoever's on first, step up.
Mayor and City Commission, we've asked, I've asked Smith, Roberts, and Baldessweiler to put this work session together to cover the wastewater treatment and wastewater collection volumes three and four. They have their CIP recommendations. If there's any questions that you would like answered, please feel free to ask. Thank you.
I'll go up, again, Tom Crowley with Corlo Engineers. What you see in front of you with the flow charts, there is the wastewater treatment, that one right there.
Okay.
Yeah, and if you look on the back, very back page, is a summary of all of the projects associated with it. And we just want to run through some of the projects associated with the wastewater treatment plant. The ranking, we had ranked the filter rehabilitations high, and the wastewater treatment plant south, the headworks facility, I only want you to focus on those. Here's what's going on in the south. The wastewater treatment plant is old, but the process is working. There was a consent decree, kind of a informal, you know, a notice from our, the regulatory agency, ODEQ, that the plant was violating its wet tests. And wet tests are associated with toxicity levels of your equipment. They had determined, the staff actually deserves a lot of credit for this, they tracked down the problem, and the problem was due to solids within the digesters. Now, you need digesters to take, when you have, when you have a wastewater treatment plant, you generate what's called biosolids. And what you do with those biosolids, in order to reduce them and be able to handle them, you put them through a digestion process. And yours happens to be anaerobic digestion. And when the anaerobic digestion process goes wrong, it releases ammonia back into the system, and that's what was causing you to fail your tests. We had a meeting with DEQ, actually several meetings, to discuss the status of the plant from a regulatory standpoint, and right now it passes all of the wet tests. However, there's been a notice that there's, the plant's aging. It's in pretty poor condition, and it's very difficult to maintain, to keep, you know, keep on that edge and keep it in compliance. So we recommend the first phase being a headworks improvements, and it's about four to six million dollars. The reason the range is, is depending upon the uncertainty of the costs. But it's a, it's a project that's between four and six million dollars. It's a headworks facility, and what the headworks facility does is it takes all of the grit, the rags, the material that shows up at the wastewater plant that could have the potential to perform a lot of wear on the equipment, and it processes that separately from the regular treatment process. So what it does is it takes the grit, removes it, separates that out, takes some of the rags, some of the items that could cause a lot of wear on the equipment. When we did the analysis on the south plant, we looked at, we were looking at numbers to replace the plant in the thirty to forty million dollar range, okay? That's just to replace the plant with something called a mechanical plant, that would be an activated sludge type process. We don't feel that's necessary. We feel that what's necessary is these headworks facilities, and then to follow the time, follow the flow charts that you see in front of you. And it basically says, if we do a headworks, we're protecting the remaining portions of the plant from additional wear. Then you do some additional improvements at the plant that won't impact whether your decision in the future. So let's say, for example, that you're fine on wet testing, and that your plant just runs just right. All you have to do is maintain that plant. Let's say that we do have problems meeting the wet testing, or any future effluent limits that they, that they will put on you. When that, when you cross that bridge, you have the option to look at it again, because the headworks facility actually forms as, instead of protecting a plant, it could possibly protect a pump station that pumps it to the north plant. So what we're doing is basically empowering you to, to keep all of your options open, but still invest in the south plant to set yourself up for the future. You've really got to take care of that item. It's an, it's an aging facility that needs to be addressed.
How critical is it?
Um, it's extremely critical to the operational plant, the continued operational plant, and that's our goal, is to continue the operational plant to avoid that thirty to forty million dollar price tag. It's simply something that you can't afford.
Now, when you say four point two to six point three, you're just...
There's a, whenever we develop estimates like that, there's a certain uncertainty that we have involved in the process of generating cost estimates. The four point two is a low range, the six point three is a high range.
But that has nothing to do with the capacity?
No.
It's one structure.
No. The capacity, the south plant, obviously, the, you know, it's, it's difficult to invest in it, and I understand that, because you, you don't have a lot of growth in that area. All your growth is going up north. It's, this is purely a regulatory-driven decision to keep that plant operating to where it's not, it's continuing to meet the limits that it's prescribed, and setting it up for the future in case there are more stringent limits.
Are these items on the summary page listed in order that they should be published?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I would focus mostly on the wastewater plant, the water plant, we've got on a different So that's the big item at the south plant. There's also a, there's also some digester improvements that need to be done. Remember how I indicated to you that one of the reasons why we had some concerns about meeting the effluent limitations with the toxicity was the digestion process for the biosolids wasn't working all that right? Well, one of the reasons why is it's very difficult to maintain, for the operators to maintain, because not only equipment works, and it needs to be repaired, and that's another means to keeping yourself in compliance.
Is that on?
Pat, is that, is that included in that number? No. Okay. That's, it's actually included in your, in the master plan itself. That number, do you remember that off the top of your head? Those digester improvements are right around the same amount. What that would involve is, right now, the digesters, what they do when they digest the biosolids, is they actually produce methane gas. Okay, so we have the new headworks are the revised cost of about five point four million, which we decided to use for budgetary purposes, and the anaerobic digestion's about six million.
And then the other summaries?
And then the other, yeah, the other summaries there. There's some miscellaneous projects that can be done much later to keep the, such as new rotating arms on the clarifiers, and that amounts to about, what'd we say, two point five million, somewhere around there?
Or is that...
Aircated.
No, that's water. No, it's in the report.
Okay.
But, so five point four million for a new headworks facility and about six million. Remember how I said the water plant stuff doesn't look so bad? That's the reason. The wastewater equipment's pretty expensive, and there's a lot to the digestion. You have to make sure the biosolids are mixed, and so you don't get those dead zones that release ammonia and have your problems. The mixing systems within these digesters are not working very well. That was part of the problem.
What approximately is the cost on that digester?
Six million.
So we're looking at...
You're looking at about, what, eleven point four?
Ten, eleven B.
Yeah.
And you're saying that this digester and this headworks are the two critical things for the plant?
Yeah, yeah. The digester facility, what it does is it makes the biosolids be able to land apply for nutrients into cornfields or pasture land. You subsurface inject, meaning you, you take the liquid that's been digested in these digesters and you inject it in the ground. Right now, they're, they're barely scraping by with what they have. The mixing system doesn't work, the heat exchange system, you have to have heat in order for this reaction to occur, the, the heating system is not operating the stuff, and then the methane capture system isn't working very well. Methane gas is highly explosive, so we want to make sure that it continues to be safe.
A new digester, would it have more capacity, or...
Um, it would be, the capacity would be improved to what it's, what it is now, because it doesn't mix very well, it has, it's very inefficient, and so it'd improve the capacity by improving the efficiency.
But the digester would not affect if we decided to pump everything to the north plant? That would be money that would be still stuck down here in the south and not help.
Correct, correct.
So where the other one is...
Where the headworks, you can use it.
Where the headworks would help us if we get to that point, where we pump everything to the north.
Correct, correct. The only prob, the only reason why we're recommending the digester improvements is because that actually helps the plant manage the, the compliance, the regulatory compliance of the plant.
You analyzed, though, pumping to the north side treatment plant?
We did.
And you chose this option because it was less costly, or...
We, we looked at the, the plant, the pumping, and really, the cost is in the pipeline. We would have to pump, what did we say, it was about twenty miles or so of a pretty good-sized pipeline in order for it to work. Now, we looked at using part of your force main for part of the way, and it's still, it wasn't very cost-effective. And our point was, why spend thirty, forty million dollars when you don't have to?
Plus you have to replace that capacity of the engine takeout.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, you were right now, your north plant didn't have much additional capacity to handle that. Yeah, it was forty-seven million is what we estimated for the pumping option, and I think it was about forty million for the treatment option. But the, the point is, you don't have to do that. We don't want you to do that. We want you to avoid that, and keep that south plant in compliance. Once you get through those two big capital investments, you've got a couple billion bucks to keep the rotating arms operational, you know, rehab the influent pump station, some things like that. That can be deferred or measured out over time. I mean, we just want you to keep that plant in compliance, and those two projects help you do that. The, the problem is, I mean, we want, we gotta do some of those projects right away, because we want to keep it in compliance. What, what DEQ has indicated that, you know, if another wet, if they fail three wet tests, so they take them every month, so if they fail three months in a row, the permit gets rescinded and they will apply an ammonia limit at the plant. And the ammonia limit will require you to do the forty-seven million, or roughly, to put in a brand-new plant, because your existing plant can't, can't handle it.
So the plant has to be shut down to do these improvements?
Um, for the, no, because you can do the pump station, you can buy, you know, right now, you, you just, you just put the pump station and connect, so no, no. The digester improvements will be a little bit more tricky, but you can keep it in operation.
So how much of this would have to be done in five years?
Most, both of those projects we're recommending for, within the next five, five years. Pat, aren't we recommending both the next five years?
The digester and the headworks, okay. And the filter rehab?
That's water, so...
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, this one kind of combines the two.
It's combined it all, which is kind of...
And we haven't even hit the north plant yet, because we wanted to talk to you about. That's, the south plant's a little more critical, okay, because you're talking about regulatory compliance. And what we've given the staff is that decision tree, that decision timeline that says, okay, let's do these improvements, let's keep the south plant going. If it doesn't, if it doesn't, if it doesn't fail the wet test, we maintain compliance. We, we wouldn't recommend it if we didn't think you could, okay? With the current permit limits. Now, if the permit limits change, because they've reclassified the stream, which is, it's, you know, going to, or the EPA comes down with some, some new limits as far as nutrients, then you'll have to go to either the north plant or revisit this. But right now, we don't see in the future, in looking through our crystal ball, any need to. What we need to do is invest some money in the south plant to keep it compliant, to avoid having to do that.
About twelve million dollars immediately?
Right.
Eleven to twelve.
Right, roughly left. And then, so what we did, when we looked at these plants, we, you know, we went and looked at what were the most critical, keeping in mind that, you know, you've only got limited capital, so we've got to make sure that, you know, the projects are pretty comprehensive and they do provide value, and they do. Now, on the north plant, that plant's in much better shape. It does have some excess flow issues. Mainly, what I mean by excess flow is when you get wet weather, there, you have to equalize the flow, meaning you have to put it somewhere to where, because the treatment plant's only rated for, you know, four or five MGD hydraulically, and you'll get more than that coming into a, during a big storm. So you, rather than invest the money to try and bring the plant up to that, we just put it into a, a holding basin, and then bleed it back in the plant when you have time. And what it, its excess flow, a holding basin is pretty small by the current plant. The plants we design have, have a much, usually a much bigger excess flow holding basin. We're also going to need some, and that, that would be the highest priority at the...
Which one is that?
The north plant, an excess flow pump station and holding. And did we get any final numbers on that, Pat, on the excess flow? No? Okay, yeah, so that, those numbers are good. And that's item three. And we also want to install at the north plant a septic receiving station. Right now, you're getting a lot of calls from septic outfitters wanting to dispose of septic, and you, you'll charge them. We recommended actually a rate to charge as well. We recommend constructing it at the north plant rather than the south plant. Originally, we, the staff looked at, we looked at the south plant, but we just don't have the capacity, and it's like, you know, you don't want to upset the apple cart when you, when you bring in a load that might be sour, or might, might have difficulty processing it. So we provide you guys with recommendations on how to handle it when it comes in, and what the cost to charge.
Are we currently doing it at the south plant, bringing it in?
I thought we were going to just take it at the north plant only.
We are.
So you want to do it currently at the south?
Yeah, it's currently going to the south plant.
So when do you, do we need to make that switch, pretty soon, quick, and get it out of the south plant, or is that...
Well, they've been pretty good about monitoring what comes into the south plant. We, we, you know, that's one of our recommendations, is yes, put it to the north plant. That's where you got capacity, and you can actually generally, generate more revenue up in the north plant, because you won't be so, it won't be such a, yeah, such a tricky deal, bringing it in. And then we've got...
So that take a lot of man-hours, Dave, to monitor those trucks that come in?
They're coming in after hours, and there's only one employee, and it takes from their position, and it takes up time.
Do we have the same staff up north? I mean, do we have staff up north just like we do down south? Is the north plant automated?
We currently do, but with the septic receiving station, the drivers would have a card, they use the card to get in, and it monitors the flow, and they could actually hold the sewage and slowly release it into the plant instead of...
Yeah, and that, that's kind of the modern design for a septic receiving station.
So you're saying that's twenty-five thousand dollars to do that?
Uh, no, a quarter of a million.
Oh, I was hoping that was twenty-five.
(laughing).
I had that figured out, but...
Not enough zeros on there.
Yeah.
So is that a concrete holding pump?
Yes.
A big...
Yeah, it's a below-grade concrete structure that they come in, they dump in, and then you either have, you have a pump station that would bleed it back into the plant, and it would all be automated, he's right?
What would be an ROI on something like that? I mean, those people, would they pay back from those septic people there?
Oh, return on investment? Um, you know, you, you pay back, but, you know, it's the typical municipal payback. It just depends upon the market.
Twenty years.
Right?
Twenty-five.
Yeah, like five, ten years, fifteen years. You know, it's a municipal...
You raise the rates, and they won't use it.
Yeah, they're already, I'm getting complaints about dumping down here south of town on the north side of the river, going there, because they don't want to pay our fees.
Right, right. It's a lot of it, a lot of bits of market, and, and your fees are actually right now really competitive. Yeah, you just don't see return on investments in the municipal industry.
But I was just curious, I don't know how much we bring in now, you know, and I mean, if it's going to pay back in ten years, that's better than some things, or fifteen.
Yeah, I mean, this is actually a, has potential for generating revenue for you.
Is that a, if we spent the two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, is that good for a long time, you think?
Twenty to twenty-five years before you'd have to do anything.
Okay.
I mean, you might have some, little small maintenance costs per year, but usually those, those mechanical systems last. I mean, the south plant, gosh, it's, you know, portions of it is fifty years old, and that's, you know...
That's not old. Is it, John?
A job?
A job. I'm beginning to see what you guys mean.
(laughing). Don't let you laugh over there.
Still a ways.
God help us.
So we, I mean, there's also a, a aerated solids holding facility that needs to be eventually put in, but we're not recommending that right away. What we're recommending right away is the excess flow pump station holding, because that's critical to the plant operations right now.
So what you're wanting, twelve million, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, pretty quick, sounds like.
Well, it's more than that, so if you do the south plant, it's, and then you add another five million on that roughly for the north plant.
Could be about right. Who would you say, Pat?
You're close.
Pretty close, pretty close to about seventeen million.
So you got those two places.
Zero to five.
Could you rise the check?
Yeah.
(laughing). I know, it's, whenever you start talking about wastewater improvements, they're, it gets expensive, and that's why we wanted to make sure you avoided that huge cost down south, or up north. We want to keep the south plant in the compliance.
So we get about five million, don't we, for every penny? Well, that's a half, so you're right.
Half a million.
We want to keep the south plant in the compliance. We really don't want that price tag at the...
Well, you don't have to spend forty million.
No, no.
Pipe it somewhere else.
You shouldn't have to do that.
Are other cities facing all the same?
Yes.
Is it, is it just the controls that are being put on, or...
For example, Edmund, it got, got more stringent regulations for nitrate, and that, along with some capacity improvements, it's going to cost them roughly forty to fifty million dollars for their nine-million gallon a day plant.
All right, Midwest City just spent eighty-one million dollars.
Yes, yeah.
Chicken.
And we, when we looked at, the least expensive option would be to put in something like you did in Mid, something like Midwest City did, and that's what we looked at. So yes, and Moore just spent about fifty-five million dollars on a wastewater plant.
Are you really not making my point?
Norman's water wastewater place, plant expansion from twelve, you know, from what?
Twelve to seventeen, was that what? Was about sixty million?
I see Midwest City financed there, but the sales tax didn't have a cent or percent or something like that.
I think you'd have a better chance of selling the sales tax deal on something like this if you looked for other things. Don't you think, Leonard?
Yeah.
Yeah, typically, though, they'll do a tax increment financing, or sales tax, or... Some people, like Nor, Norman actually did do an SRF loan, didn't they?
They did what?
They did an SRF loan, that night.
Revenue bonds?
State, yeah, they do revenue bonds, issue revenue bond.
Well, they can't raise rates unless it goes to the vote of the people.
Right, right. So typically, you have to find some creative ways of getting...
Well, a half cent to us would be about, what, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, a half-million dollars a year, based on the current income level. That's, you know, that's not a lot of, but I mean, again, that would pay off something pretty good, a half-million dollars a year, but... Twelve million dollars tomorrow.
Well, like I said, you guys have never done a water and wastewater master plan, so it's this kind of issues that come up that we want to avoid a forty-million-dollar price tag.
Right, sure.
And we want to make sure you do.
So we're looking at around twenty million for the water, and seventeen million right away for wastewater?
Yeah, but if you look at this priority, though, list, he's now narrated down with the water on it, we're not there to that point, like twenty million, see? That would be the ultimate.
See, the, the, the next spreadsheet actually has all the water on it, yeah.
That's right.
Yeah, the one that, yeah, that one.
But we could, in other words, we could get along.
Twenty fifteen is about four million. Twenty fourteen, that's just your stream unit. Twenty sixteen is a million, one point one million.
So we're looking at five years, though, right, probably?
About, I'd say to twenty.
Yeah, once you, once we get past ten years, it becomes very, a lot of the capacity-driven ones are if you grow, you know, we projected growth. It was modest, but we, you know, I wouldn't invest in anything beyond ten years for now. I would actually have some financial plan in place to where you can address it as it comes.
Well, even the next five years, we're looking at six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, fifteen, about sixteen thousand, I mean, million, sixteen million for two thousand In two thousand nineteen, we're looking at probably seventeen million.
Well, you know, I'm of the opinion that, as I've said, you can drive home roads, lumpy as everything, but you gotta have water and sewer from the town, you mean, and we just don't have much of a choice.
So we're looking at around thirty-four, thirty-five million dollars we have to come up with.
And believe me, we, you know, we looked at this in detail, and we wanted to make sure we prioritize this. We realized this. And we wanted to make sure we prioritize this. We realized this.
The water line issue and stuff and things like that will be coming off, so you can start getting ready for, you know, for that revenue to kick in, to pay some of that back. We planned on using... Well, the water line came in at what, seven million or something like that. So we have a water resource.
Yeah, and that was a good investment.
Right, loans, so that...
I mean, Oklahoma City's looking at a billion.
They've cut on that line for the five years, seven years. That water, I think, seven?
That, that was a very good investment because it is security of your water future.
When we first started raising rates, and that's been what, three years now?
Yeah, we're three years into it.
Almost four years into it, because this is the last rate coming up. So it's almost four years into it.
And we only have the rates coming up on sewer, don't we? I don't think we have anything with water, do we?
I don't know.
No, it's just sewer. We've got the small one coming on sewer, and that's it. That's the last rate, so I think that's... Well, you are certainly not the bearer of good tidies yet.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry about that.
We paid you to bring bad news to us.
It seems like it happens on every master plan, I do. It's, it's like we can't find money.
Of course, on the good side of it, we need the information to know what we're facing.
Well, sure, it's great, I think it's wonderful.
You're, you're, you, now you're empowered to make decisions.
Right.
And you know what the costs of those decisions are.
Well, it looks to me like we're gonna have to have a planning session with this new commission pretty quick.
And typically what, what a council will do, and your city manager's not here, but typically what you'll do is either the city manager's office or your, or, or somebody's office will do a cost of service study. That'll look at the fine, fine, ways to finance these project pa- actually, Pat, who's with me here, has done quite a few of those.
What'd you call that?
A cost of service study. Which would allow, you know, which is another, so now the master plan sets forth a cost and timeline, and a cost of service study would help you determine how to pay for that, over that dunk.
And Pat'll do that for like five hundred dollars.
He's looking for a different Pat.
Wackin' days.
So where you look at your cost of service now, you project your cost of services in the future and try and fund that.
Again, we got some work to do, setting around a table.
Our citizenry's not very happy with their water rates right now, so...
No, yeah, yeah.
I think the minimum sewer water and trash is about sixty bucks an hour per month.
You know, James, but I...
We're pretty high compared to other cities.
But I think they would have set, if the citizens could have heard what we've heard, but they can't, you know what I'm saying? Is that we're fortunate enough to know in...
And, and the cost of service study actually outlines, you know, what other people are paying and what the going rate is for...
We get that from OML, we know exactly what the other cities are paying and...
Oklahoma City just did, uh, uh, did this for their water, uh, in lieu of the, you know, the billion-dollar price tag that they have, so their rates are going up quite a bit.
Yeah, they're, I heard their rates are going really up quite a bit.
And they have to, they have, yeah.
Well, let's hope we're not to that point, we just gotta figure out how to get creative on this.
You made some very good choices in putting that pipeline in and doing the yield study on the West Wacken's reservoir. That, like I said, for your foreseeable future, you have enough water, and that's a big, for communities in the western side of Oklahoma. You've done well.
Does it light up quite a bit, or is it...
Six inches.
Six inches.
So we're supposed to write leases.
Yeah, I noticed that, yeah.
It's not over the spillway, is it?
No, not close.
Letting say you got that point, you can run up there and block it off.
Well, I, I can tell you this much, I've certainly enjoyed reading this and having read every word.
Except this last part here.
Well, no, but I mean, it, it's at least, you know, the guy comes and climbs on the roof and tells you, says, partner, your roof's getting ready to start leaking like a sieve. You have no choice, but at least you can start planning for it and tell you, sit down with your wife, say, honey, we gotta set a hundred dollars a month aside or something to start getting ready for our roof. And that's what I think I'm hearing here is that we have to get, we've got to do something, and it hits.
Well, that's what I said in the last meeting, every paragraph of this, of this study comes off with, with some kind of need on it, so I just wondered what the bottom line was. So like I said, every, every paragraph winds up and I'll highlight that you have some kind of a need on it.
Well, at least you got this recap here, which kind of helped, and we have this here too, huh?
What is this?
That is a summary of the projects for the...
That's this many pages, it's...
Uh, yeah, that's also included with that summary of the project. What's that last page, Lindsay?
I'm gonna present on that next.
Okay, she's presenting on that.
Oh, okay.
She's what?
She's gonna talk about the last page, she's probably gonna want some more money.
Turn it over to Lindsay.
She wants us to spend more money too, right?
This is on your collection system, right?
This is wastewater collection?
Yes.
I say it's right down the street and into the river. I don't understand the problem.
Well, good evening. Again, my name's Lindsay Olson, and today I'm gonna present on the wastewater collection. We have some slides. If we could get those pulled up. This is the report that was handed to you today, and I just wanna go over that briefly. But, um, we'll start with some background information. We'll go over how we evaluated the capacity in the collection network, the proposed changes, and then, um, how we evaluated the future model. So go ahead, next slide. Next slide. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you.
There you go, you got something?
Oh.
Went the wrong line.
It's a little delayed. Okay, so to go over a few numbers at first, these are, oh, man. It's just really slow, so I'll, I'll, uh, work ahead. But each of your plant sees roughly one and a half million gallons per day, and in July twenty-ten, you saw a peak of four-point-eight million gallons per day at the North wastewater treatment plant, and seven-point-three at the South wastewater treatment plant. And that came from a particular storm event, and so you can see that the South wastewater treatment plant sees a lot more infiltration from rainwater, um, on the south side of town versus the north. All right, so next we'll go over the wastewater collection system model, and it is a work in progress. Unfortunately, there's not enough data to complete the model itself, and so that's something that we'll talk about. But right now we have a framework, and you can see a schematic here on the right and in, in your report here. That shows we have all the ten-inch and greater size lines in the model, all the corresponding, uh, manholes and, uh, lift stations and force mains. So in addition to that, we have identified sub-basins for each of those ten-inch and larger lines. A sub-basin is a drainage area that collects and pulls all the wastewater from that area to one particular point. And then each line, it goes from one basin to the next, and it, uh, compounds on itself.
Let me kind of stop you there.
Sure.
Is that what you see when you drive in Oklahoma City or through Tulsa, those real recessed areas? Is that where that wastewater can go?
Well...
You see soccer fields even in, and I wondered, is that where, it looks like the creeks can flow into those when they're overflowed or something, is that...
Well, that, that might be built enough.
Is that the basins that they've built to hold that?
Well, okay, so Shawnee operates on a gravity system, so typically...
Right, but I'm saying if they built the basins in Oklahoma City and Tulsa when you're going through on the interstate...
Those are storm, stormwater detention ponds.
So does that slow up the flow into the treatment plant?
That's just to collect, uh, rainwater, only rainwater.
Right, stormwater.
And so it goes into a creek eventually. They just hold it there and then...
Well, she was saying that her capacity went way up because of a storm.
And that, she's gonna talk about that.
So that, that, they've solved that by building those things, huh?
Well, this, that's, that's a separate issue. That's, stormwater is se- is supposed to be separate from wastewater. If you have an old system, they co-mingle.
Okay.
And she's gonna address that here and then.
Okay, thank you. I'll try to figure that out.
Well, now we require, uh, any new additions, we require some kind of retaining so that it won't all jump, dump into the system or all into the, at one time. So, uh, that's like Oklahoma City and so forth where, uh, you have to have some holding area so it won't just dump it all out into the system at one time.
So that's what I, I was getting that confused with the retention that you're talking about.
But that's freshwater.
Yeah, okay. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Sorry? Oh, I'm sorry, I jumped too soon. Okay, so for each sub-basin, we also estimated a flow, uh, based on the land use... Sorry, I jumped too soon. There, there's a estimated flow based on the land use for each area, so depending on the number of homes, schools, commercial facilities, things like that, we can estimate a flow from that drainage area, and depending on how the lines connect, you can estimate a flow at your, what you see at your treatment plants and other areas of interest. So we've also looked at the lift stations. There's twelve total. They range in size from one and a half to fifty horsepower. And unfortunately, there's limited information on these pumps as well, and a lot of the pumps are no longer manufactured. So even if we reach out to, uh, distributor or something, they don't necessarily have the pump curve or the operating conditions for the pumps. And, um, so a lot of times we've assumed or, or estimated how the pumps are operated by, uh, just modeling it on a, uh, a design point rather than a curve. So there were also four flow meters that were placed around the city, uh, at four particular major collection areas. Two at the north, just outside the North wastewater treatment plant, and two just upstream of the South wastewater treatment plant. And, um, from the data that was collected, we compared this to our estimated flows as kind of a calibration to make sure that our estimates are within reason of what the city actually sees. This here is an example of, uh, one of, some of the data that was collected at the, what we called the South Flow Meter. And this here shows, it's a little hard to see, but in your report you can see a little bit better, there are lines as kind of, uh, at the bottom that show when rain events and how large of a rain event occurred, and you can tell the peak in the flow, you can see it, how much, uh, the, you can see the increase in flow that that flow meter saw from that particular rain event. So that brings me to inflow and infiltration, which is excess water in the system, particularly from rain events. And so infiltration occurs underground, and inflow occurs from above-ground sources. So, uh, a manhole that's missing a lid or a legal connection, someone connected their downspout or their sump pump or whatever. Um, it can be a key issue because it, the, the peak that you see decreases the efficiency and the capacity of the entire network. It increases your operating cost that you, uh, see at your wastewater treatment plants, and in some cases it can cause backflooding from the sewer system and also cause issues with compliance with regulatory standards.
Steve, what do we have, an influx of fresh water? Can you divert that to a holding tank with that, so you don't have to process it all immediately?
At the south side we can, at the north side we cannot. And remember, that was one of the improvements we had, that's a north plant, was to, but to do exactly that. We have a ten-meg gallon holding pump.
I'm sorry, what?
We have a ten-meg gallon holding pump at the south plant. And the one at the north plant is one million gallons, so it's, it has no capacity to it.
That's just an earthen holding tank, isn't it?
At the south plant it is, at the north plant it's concrete, and it's very, I mean, extremely ten times too small. Yeah.
Well, can you make that an earthen with liner, with liner in it for freshwater?
Yeah, I mean, you could typically just build a lagoon.
Yeah, but it has to have a liner in it, doesn't it?
It's a clay or it can be a, a plastic liner, but you typically around here it's clay.
All right, so next we'll go over how we evaluated the system. And one of the things we looked at to address the inflow and infiltration issue is to determine the portions and the manholes in your network that fall within the hundred-year floodplain. And all the manholes that fall within this area were, the rim elevations were surveyed to get a precise elevation, and then that elevation was compared to the studied FEMA, uh, determined elevation for the hundred-year flood. And if the rim elevation fell one foot above and lower of the hundred-year flood elevation, then we recommend either to raise the manhole or to, uh, seal the lid.
I may have owed you that.
Well, we'll get to that, quite a few.
She's gonna bear it right now, just to, uh, certainly.
So another condition that we evaluated the system on was pipe capacity, and we did this using the estimated flows based on the sub-basins that we delineated. And, uh, we used a peaking factor of three, and we compared the, this flow to the maximum capacity that the pipe size for that sub-basin can carry. And if the capacity was less than the expected peak flow, then that would be, uh, reason to call for a pipe upgrade. And the system was also evaluated on the data available, so like I said, the model can't be completed because it, there's a lot of missing data. And so we proposed the collection of certain data in order to complete the hydraulic model and then use the model to determine other weak points and it'd be more of a valuable tool to the city to, uh, determine where your money is best spent to improve the network. All right, so next we'll go over the proposed upgrades. So there are three-hundred-and-forty-two manholes located within the floodplain. And a hundred-and-eighty-four of those fall within one foot or below of the hundred-year flood elevation. And so we propose that each one of these have additional height to bring it one foot above that, uh, hundred-year base flood elevation.
Is there any, was that questioned that floodplain? I know there's been a lot of discussion about what's in the floodplain in Shawnee and what's not, and you just took FEMA's?
We took the FEMA flood, firm flood maps. Well, they do, they have different zones where they have studied areas and non-studied areas. And so typically the studied areas, uh, hold more, the numbers hold more value, but there are non-studied areas and, of course, there's gonna be some discrepancy between what you actually see and the, I believe the firm maps were redone by FEMA not too long. Do you know what year it was?
Two thousand and ten, uh, all the maps were updated.
Were they?
Yes, but it's not too bad. They can be as old as, how old were they before then?
Nineteen-seventy-eight or so, thirty years old. They started updating in two thousand and eight all over the country.
Okay, thank you.
So in addition to, to raising the manholes, there are thirty-three that fall within a roadway, and so they can't be raised. So we recommend that those be, instead of raising them, the manholes will be, uh, sealed, rather. And, uh, oh, let me touch it. Um, so it'd have a bonnet and a watertight seal, and then in addition to that, all the manholes, whether raised or sealed, would have, uh, interior rehabilitation, which waterproofing the interior, but we don't, uh, most of these, I would say the majority of them, we don't necessarily know the flow line. So we can't, we don't have enough information to estimate the total number of vertical feet that need interior rehab. And so that's another reason to call for more, more surveys. It would definitely lock down the, the estimate closer so if you know exactly how many vertical feet you're gonna need to, to rehab. All right, so next we've, uh, we did the pipe capacity upgrades. We identified six pipes that, uh, were needed, were needed of an upgrade. They're existing twenty-seven inch, and they're proposed to be changed to either thirty or thirty-six. However, there's additional survey that needs to be done for these as well because we don't necessarily know the slope on them. And so if any of the pipes ten-inch or larger that we looked at in, in the city don't meet the minimum DEQ required slope, uh, then those would need to be upgraded as well. So these are the pipes here, listed here, and then on the next slide, there, uh, is a map that shows the location. It's just upstream of the South wastewater treatment plant. And so you can see the yellow is proposed to thirty and the blue is to thirty-six.
Steve, where is that area from, Eric?
That's, is that the South Plant?
I know the South Plant, but she said upstream from it, where?
That fall, the railroad tracks.
Okay.
Well, I saw like 27-inch to 30-inch, that's not really that much.
Well, and that's a good point. So in, later in the presentation, we're going to talk about if the INI is addressed, we would recommend remeasuring using the flow meters in the same locations to see the difference in flow that you see by decreasing the INI into the system. And if that decreases the flow enough with your peak, your peaking factor, you may not need that upgrade until in the future. So next...
30-inch lines under gravity flow, what's the maximum amount it'll carry to come in?
Do you know?
What, 50%?
It's a lot. It's a lot. I mean, you're, as you could, you saw on that table you had a day where you were over 7 million with a 27-inch. And that's, we're assuming that it's flat, so if it's a steeper slope, then we carry even more than that.
Mm-hmm. That's why the, the survey is important because you, when the slope of the pipe's unknown, it's a little bit hard to lock down what the capacity would be. But so next, we evaluated the system on the information that was available. And so you have roughly 3,500 manholes throughout the city. And we would recommend collecting the rim and invert elevations of each of those. And 538 have already been s-... Yes, that's correct. 538 have already been surveyed, the rim elevation has already been surveyed. And most of those are the manholes that were surveyed within the flood plain. We also recommend doing closed-circuit television of the existing pipes underneath the, that fall within the flood plain. The CCTV will identify any damaged sections that are contributing to the INI issue. And when you point, so once the CT, CCTV identifies those locations, we would recommend doing a point repair at that, at that spot. And with those upgrades in combination with the manhole upgrades, you should see a significant less INI flow from, during a rain event. All right, so in addition to that, we recommend including GPS as-built for all future utility projects. And what this does is it'll really, w- once you have a strong model, you, you, you survey the city, you create this working model, the as-built are really going to help keep your model up to date and make sure that you don't run into this lack of information problem or say the hydraulic model isn't calibrated or matching to how the city actually performs.
Steve, let me ask a quick question. The fellow that's heading up that, you know, plotting all the GPSs of all the water meters and all that stuff, would that be tied to this? Is that what they're...
Well, it could be, yeah.
Okay.
All right, so for the capital improvement pro- program, we recommend, like I mentioned before, that the INI is going to affect the pipe capacity. So we recommend that you address that issue first and then conduct a field survey, get all the information, the slopes, the invert and rim elevations of the, of the manholes. And then use that information and the, I'm sorry, in combination with the CCTV and the point repairs that you do and the, and the damaged spots that are found. After that, then re-measure the flow at the same locations and see how those upgrades have, have changed your, what you typically see as an average flow and during a rain event. And then decide whether, based on pipe capacity, if those six pipes still need to be upgraded in size. And another consideration being that those pipes are just upstream of the south wastewater treatment plant, if they're going to be able to carry more capacity, we would need to make sure that the treatment plant at that point has the capacity to handle those flows as well. So priority list was compiled, and that's what, Linda, you were asking what this sheet is here. And so we recommend that within the next year, the data collection, addressing the, the manholes, the CCTV and the point repairs all be completed. And we have an estimate of roughly one and a half million dollars for that. And then following that, if, should the city still need the pipe upgrades, we have that listed as well, and that's at 815,000.
It's almost like running a camera down every oversized line or fucking lines.
All the, all the pipes that are within the flood plain. And we would recommend starting on the south side since that's where you see a lot of the INI issues. And the city, I'm sorry, one thing I should point out is the city owns and operates CCTV equipment. So should you decide that you have the manpower to do the, complete that work in house, that could help cut down on your costs.
But you're talking about down at that crew for quite a bit of time. If we did it in-house.
Yes, exactly, yeah. So next, I'll go over the, how the future system was evaluated. And the future system was only evaluated with pipe capacity. And how we did this is we took the sub-basins and any undeveloped area, we expect, we expected certain development. So we increased the number of homes, the number of schools, et cetera, and used that along with the city's future land use map. With the peaking factor, got the new estimated flow, compared that to the capacity of the pipes to determine if the, if an upgrade was needed. And so, um, with the, so when we did this, we considered that all the upgrades we proposed for the existing model had already been constructed. So with the current pipe capacity upgrades that were proposed, should you need them, there aren't any at this time, future pipe upgrades that are needed. However, when the hydraulic model's completed, that'll really identify weak points in your system that the, in the future, the city may want to address before it becomes a, a bigger issue. So i- it may be that maybe the pipe capacity upgrades aren't needed right away, but maybe in the future they're needed. It, it all comes down to the flows that you see once the INI is addressed. And again, I mentioned the, the slope that DEQ requires, so with the survey, we'll be able to tell that as well.
Well, camera won't give you an idea about the slope from it.
No, but if they're in the, I mean, it, they should be able, able to get a measure down from the manhole.
To the next manhole.
Yes, and then you could take the, the two points at either end to determine the slope of that line. So, um, oh, yes, and so the hydraulic model will be able to identify areas that need to be addressed in the future. So that's all we have. Do you have any questions? These are pennies compared to what's on...
But that it is, it all affects the wastewater as well as the freshwater. Or that actually goes into the same system that they give it to, yeah.
Is it a law within cities, all of the, like, branches from the streets and everything has to go through the treatment plants?
It's not supposed to.
Typically, you don't want to because then you have to treat that as if it's sewage and it's not sewage. It's just rainwater.
So you can just, it's just a matter of flowing it and getting it into the river. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Keeping it out of the, of the sanitary sewer network.
Right.
You're treating it, 60% of your, when it rains, 60% of your water that you're treating is rainwater. It's not sewage. So it cuts everything down, the size of your plant, the cost.
But you had, you talked about a chunk of mine to have a separate system.
It's supposed to be separate by law. You're supposed to have a separate storm sewer system and a separate sanitary sewer system. And they're not supposed to be connected, but historically, a lot of times they were. And then when you have older pipe and older manholes that leak, then you have a lot of, especially when you have 3,500 manholes, you have a lot of places that water gets into the system.
You said something about sealing off the 33 manholes that were, like, in the roads.
Mm-hmm.
Weren't they there for a purpose? I mean, what will happen if you seal those off?
Well, if you seal them, they're no longer open to the atmosphere. So you, typically, you wouldn't want to go about just sealing as many manhole, you know, instead of raising some and just sealing them all. Because then you're playing with pressures in the system and where it backs up, it's going to overflow somewhere else. You're, you know, you run the risk of getting pushed up somewhere else. So really, we would only recommend sealing those manholes that can't be raised, the ones that are in the road, and raising the rest.
Okay, so that 33 won't cause a problem?
They shouldn't. I mean, if you go, if you do a large stretch, that's all, I mean, typically, these are, you know, single, they're not all within one line of each other. But if you did a, a long stretch that were all within a row, you might have some issues, but...
Okay.
So Steve, on the streets when we're resurfacing and everything like that, you know, there's always that indentation where the manhole is, so are you, are they saying that, do you asphalt over those after you seal them?
No, um, what you do, you, you just put a watertight lid on it. So it seals the, the lid is sealed to the ring.
It's not sealed currently.
You still want access to it if you need to, yeah.
So you don't get the infiltration of the water?
Right.
Right.
Just stopping it. And that's why we're raising the manholes is to keep water from coming in them during the flood to get it up so that it doesn't...
Well, I don't think a 7 million gallons is getting into, but that's coming, it's got to be part of that coming off the streets when those, it's going into the sewer line instead of going to, into a creek somewhere or something.
Well, that, back in 2013 in May when we had that real big rain event, we were out, Pat and I were out at the south plant, I think Pat was there. And the water, and the plant was the same color as the river, so you knew where it was coming from. It's that red color.
Looked just like river water.
So...
Looked just like river water coming into the land.
So you know it's coming in from, from the creeks that run up into town and, uh...
And by raising these manholes and things like this, that should alleviate?
Well, and, and waterproofing the interior.
Right, and waterproofing those should eliminate that problem?
It should, cut it way back.
Cut it way back.
We see that in all, uh, small towns in Oklahoma that have 80-year-old systems. They didn't, there was no regulation back then to raise the manholes. There is now when you apply for a DEQ permit for a sewer line, you have to raise the manholes above the 100-year flood elevation. Back in the day, you didn't have to.
Interesting.
Well, all that line, main line going to the north plant after it goes to the flood plain, I think, it's all built up.
It does, yes. It's just not as, as apparent on the north side as it is on the south side.
Well, we talk about, and this, you guys, y'all know, ladies and gentlemen, know a lot more about this, but I wonder about our creeks. If the flow was better, we wouldn't have that difficulty of it backing up so much in many of the areas. You know what I'm saying? Like, over here, of course, it floods over here on the east end of Maine all the time because all that water comes all the way from the bowling alley up through there. But the creeks, if you can solve some of that problem, if you had the creeks flowing into the river better, wouldn't you? If our city's addressing that, or how they do it?
It's expensive to remove debris every time you have a rain event in Oklahoma City.
Well, it concrete some of, they're kind of, some additions up there with concrete, both sides and the bottom.
But if the creek backs up, the odds are it's going to, it's, it's going to flow into the manholes and get into our treatment plant and all that.
It gets into the groundwater, it gets into the pipe.
So is any of our drains, like off the streets or anything, is it connected into the sewer line itself?
It can get in there through the manholes. There's...
He means the stormwater.
Yeah.
Is there a combined sewer system?
It, it, it's hard to say if it is.
If, if it is, it would be an illegal connection.
Yeah.
So...
Riff drains and things like that.
From what we can see, it, we don't expect there to be a combined sewer system.
Steve, what do you?
Commissioner Harri, yeah, over the, over the years, there, there has been some found, and when they are found, they are disconnected.
They do, yeah.
So when we find them, we do disconnect them. But the original system was built that way.
That's what I thought, yeah.
How is the analysis done of the water that goes, let's say, from an oil change place? That goes down their drain and ends up in our city treatment plant, which increases the cost for us to produce that? You know, I ran a company out in California, I'm not saying we go that way, but they came out every single 90 days and checked somehow in the line, and whatever that analysis was, was what we paid. If, if they found grease or oil, we paid more for our, our service because it was costing so much more to process it.
Up on restaurants and everything else were required, grease traps. And those had to be pumped. They're not allowed to go out, the way they're constructed, they won't go out into the sewer. It's maintained within that trap and then they have to be cleaned, cleaned out. So it's like a quick stop for a, or a restaurant or something else, so they have to have a grease trap in, in the line that traps all the product that's on the...
What if they don't clean it?
Backs up.
Backs up, then they got problems.
In Oklahoma City, industrial facilities, they have pre, pre-treatment standards that they have to meet. In other words, they have a permit through Oklahoma City that where they have to test pH and metals, et cetera, and they have to meet certain requirements before they can release into the city sewer system.
Because if that made it difficult like that here in Shawnee, it'd all be in the north plant.
Oh, yeah, because of manufacturing up there. Okay. Well, this has been most interesting. Does my wife work for y'all? She's always figuring out ways to spend money on this.
Well, thank you very much.
Steve, do you have anything that you need to share with us, sir?
Just real quick, since you guys are talking about the fog program, we are currently trying to develop a, a fog ordinance. And we'll have some employees that will monitor the grease traps. They'll get the manifest from the companies that emptied the grease traps. And we will try to stay on top of that moving forward. We're still, still developing that, that...
Was that a problem? You getting part of this stuff in the plants or you're not?
We haven't really, we've noticed it in the north side. There was a couple DEQ inspections where they noticed it floating on the water a little bit on the clarifier. It wasn't a big problem, but moving forward, we're going to try to, we're going to try to address it before it becomes a problem, before it stops up our lines. That's all I have.
Mr. City Manager, do you have anything you'd like to share with us?
No new business.
No new business. If we will adjure.